We're going to call the meeting to order. Councilman Cook is going to lead us in prayer, and I'll ask Councilman Bellard to please lead us in the pledge following.
Loving God, Maker of heaven and earth, protect us in your love and mercy. Send the Spirit of Jesus to be with us, distill our fears, and give us confidence. Guard us from harm during this storm, and renew our faith to serve you faithfully. Give us the courage to face all difficulties, and the wisdom to see the ways your Spirit binds us together in mutual assistance. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilman Bellard, and Councilman Cook. We welcome you to the City Parish Council meeting. We, as your representatives in the Lafayette Consolidated Government, welcome your involvement and encourage your participation. This meeting is a public hearing. If you wish to address the council on any item on this agenda, please fill out a blue request to address the council form noting the agenda item number. The blue form is available to you in the far end and should be submitted to the council clerk, Ms. Veronica L. Williams, seated to my left in the middle, prior to the call of the agenda item. It is important to fill out the blue form completely and note the specific agenda item number about which you wish to speak. If the card is not completely filled out or is not legible to the clerk, you will not be given the opportunity to speak. If you have materials you wish to submit to the council, please give those to Ms. Williams along with your blue form. In an effort to allow everyone an opportunity to be heard, the five-minute rule will be in effect. Speakers shall refrain from debating, personal attacks, and from making confrontational derogatory comments. I am requesting that the first row to my left be used for media only. Lastly, food and drinks are not allowed in the auditorium, and all phones and electronic devices shall be silenced from this point forward. I am also requesting that anyone who approaches the council state their name and title for the official record. Meeting procedures are by resolution and not by roach rules of order. Documents including agendas, ordinances, resolutions, and minutes related to this meeting and others are posted online at www.lafayette.la.gov or refer to the web address on the top of the agenda. The council encourages your involvement and participation by volunteering for boards and commissions. If you are interested in finding out which board suits your interests, call 291-8800 or pick up a pamphlet at the door. We have a number of chair announcements tonight, so members, I ask that you follow along relatively closely. There are a number of items that have amendments, suggested amendments, and other issues, as well as for our public. But before doing that, I would like us to, on behalf of our Congress and the recent act of violence brought against Congress members, in particular, the injuries sustained by Louisiana Congressman Scalia, I ask that we take a moment of silence in unison for those who are serving us in different capacities. I could tell you, and I'm sure I speak in this instance on behalf of all of our members, our work isn't always perfect, and our work isn't always agreed upon, but I think the one thing that does exist is that we all report to our jobs with a lot of passion and with intent and hope to do great things, and whenever any elected official put into harm's way, I think that puts us all in harm's way, in addition to our public employees and officials. So we just totally denounce that behavior and those actions, and we're going to continue to just hope, wish, and pray for speedy recovery. In addition, I would like to indicate that notice is hereby given that the Lafayette City Parish Council plans to consider adopting a resolution ordering and calling elections in the parish to authorize the renewal of ad valorem taxes and to authorize the reduction and extension of an ad valorem tax or taxes at its meeting on Tuesday, July 25, 2017, beginning at 5:30 p.m. here in the council auditorium located at 705 West University Avenue, Lafayette, Louisiana. Also, members, item number 13. Item number 13, final adoption of ordinance number 1012017. Finance has requested an amendment to add an asphalt roller to the budget revision, which was inadvertently left off. So there will be an amendment for an asphalt roller on item number 13 in that budget revision. Members, item number 23. Item 23, final adoption of ordinance number 1112017 relative to the memorandum of understanding between South Louisiana Community College and the Lafayette Consolidated Government. Legal has proposed an amendment to update the contract duration and extensions in Section 2 of the ordinance. So there will be a proposed amendment there as well. Item 24. Item 24, final adoption of ordinance number 1122017. This is relative to the UDC Unified Development Code amendments. Legal and planning, zoning, and development has proposed amendments to replace the formatting error for the table in subsection double Q, to correct the language in subsection F, to add language to subsection 89-36G, and to fix formatting in section 2 subsection T. All of these items have been presented to you in advance, and I hope you had the opportunity to look at them. Of course, we'll address any questions, but these changes to the UDC will be done in one amendment. Item 28. Item 28, introductory of ordinance 0, I'm sorry, 1662017 relative to parking code changes. Legal has proposed an amendment to allow the Public Works Director to rent Lafayette Consolidated Government parking facilities for private events and to set the rates for such. So there's an amendment being proposed there. Item number 29. Item 29, introductory ordinance 1172017 relative to the Hyman Center personnel. Community Development has requested it be pulled prior to introduction for resubmitted during the budget process. So this matter will be brought up at budget time as opposed to address at this meeting here today. Item number 32. Item 32, introductory ordinance 1202017 relative to change in polling locations. Legal has proposed an amendment. As such, the Diocese of Lafayette did not approve the use of Holy Family Catholic School. The impacted precincts will be moved to the Martin Luther King Recreational Center and will be pulled from the ingloble list for separate vote and discussion due to this proposed amendment. Okay? Due to this proposed amendment. I would like to wish Kathy Doty, Council Receptionist, a happy birthday, which she celebrates on June 26. There will be no amendment to that date. She will celebrate her birthday on June the 26th. Happy birthday, Kathy. She's not with us, but Kathy works extremely hard, and we appreciate everything we do. Yes, ma'am, Madam Clerk?
And as you mentioned, Kathy Doty, we forgot to put on the announcements that her stepmom passed away, and we send condolences and prayers to the family.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Also, in reference to one member, Bruce Kong, District 6 council member, is unable to make tonight's meeting. He is out of state on business. And finally, due to Independence Day holiday, the Lafayette Public Utilities Authority and the council meetings in the months of July and August will be conducted on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month. We will return to the typical first and third Tuesdays again in September. But on those two months, to make our calendar accurate, the meetings will be moved to second and fourth. Okay. So I think that's my announcements for now, though I do need to consult with you on item number 32, Madam Clerk. But at this time, for council announcements, Mr. Castile.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to announce that the Finance Committee will be holding a public hearing to hear comments from the public on suggestions and recommendations with reference to the parish revenue shortfalls. They'll be here in this room, June 29 at 5:30, and it's for the public to come in and have some discussion about the parish revenue issues that we're having. We will continue to announce this on a regular basis, so I would invite everyone to show up on the 29th. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Any other council announcements? All right, seeing none, we're going to now go to the Executive President's Report. Mr. Mayor President?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could, I'd like to bring up Sidra, our Communications Director, just to discuss briefly preparations for Tropical Storm Cindy.
Hi, good afternoon. I just, I've been collecting information from the various departments and speaking, coordinating with media, trying to push information out to the citizens, so I just wanted to offer an update as to what's been going on within Consolidated Government with regards to preparations for the storm, the impending storm. As with the standard operations for the drainage department, the drainage crews have been out and have been checking ditches and culverts, checking for blockages, removing blockages that they deem could be potentially impede the flow of water in the event that the drains hold water, and they will continue to do so. If people have a concern, if constituents have a concern, they can call the Public Works dispatch number at 291-8500, and that's where they can report those concerns. That is a 24-hour service, so people can call at any time. We do have on-call crews that can go out also in the event of emergency to respond to those blockages, as well as trees and limbs falling. You can also call for, LUS customers can call 291-8280 to report any utility outages. And also, we just want to make sure that everybody knows that they've been doing a great job of going out to those sandbag stations. We have almost depleted, probably at this point now depleted, both the sand, all the sand at both sandbagging stations. Public Works has ordered a significant number of additional bags, I think 39,000 additional bags for those two stations. So they will have fresh sand tomorrow morning for people who are still wishing to bag their state, their house. The sand and the bags are provided, but people do need to bring their own shovels and their own manpower. The two stations are located at 400 N Dugah Road off of North University, as well as the South District Station, which is at 1017 Fortune Road in Youngsville. Those are just the two LCG-operated sandbagging stations. That's in addition to the other ones that are provided throughout the parish and within the region. I also wanted to let everybody know that, I see some of you already have it, but the LUS hurricane handbook is out. It's available. We've got them here at City Hall. They're also available at the various public libraries for pickup, and it's available also online for download and viewing. It's got all kinds of great tips, and really, it's got all the important numbers that you would need to call. Probably most importantly, though, we want people to know and remember that in an emergency situation, you would call 911. Don't call those dispatch numbers. If you're in a rescue, an emergency situation, fire, or something like that, do call 911. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you all might have. We're just trying to get the information out there.
One second, please. Mr. Pat Lewis?
Yes, Sidra, I was wondering, do we have anything in place for anyone that have disability that go out there to pick up sandbags? You say to bring their own manpower or whatever?
Right. Yeah, no, that's a great question. I would imagine you could probably call, it's not necessarily what we would normally do, but call the dispatch number or call up in the mayor's office at 8300, and I'm sure that we could coordinate someone in that instance to maybe help a citizen with a disability to get them their bags. They would probably need to have someone driving them, or they would have to have their own transportation and potentially someone, you know, to help unload, maybe a neighbor, but we could possibly help at the sandbagging sites get those bagged up for them with, you know, one of our crewmen.
So we're saying at the site, but not necessarily to bring sandbags at their residence?
I'm not aware that we would be able to provide that service because, you know, most of our guys are out actively checking those, you know, the flow of the drainage and the ditches.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Terrio?
Yes, Sidra, a couple of quick inquiries that I had, maybe you can clarify, and I even actually heard on the radio too, somebody was discussing about it this afternoon. You mentioned that the two locations for sandbags were in Dugah and also on Fortune Road.
Correct.
And one individual called me, they're like on in Congress right there, and they're like, I either have to go way to N Dugah or way down to Youngsville. Are there any other locations, or can we provide an additional location for someone or like central Lafayette in order to get sandbags? Is that something that you guys have thought about?
That is a great question, and if you recall, in August after or during the floods, we did establish additional sandbagging sites at Blackham Coliseum, and I believe it was at the South Regional Library. So in events where it's, you know, needed throughout the parish and we can't get enough people in and out of the regular sandbagging stations, we would possibly consider that. We've not gotten to that point yet, but it's something that we can certainly speak with Public Works about to see if we're at that site. It is, it is difficult for us to have and host a regular facility at, other than those two locations. There's a lot, you know, that goes into it, but it's something that we can, we can certainly talk about.
All they're asking is that please look into it to see if there may be another possibility to give people a better opportunity to access them.
Fair enough.
That's all I have, thank you.
And follow-up to Mr. Terrio's inquiry, Public Works site itself at one time was a location which was, I think could be centrally located. That has been discontinued. I mean, the announcement of the satellites is kind of in addition to, but I thought like at Public Works, you could almost get sandbags almost any time.
Our current sites that I'm only aware of are the two that I've mentioned and not necessarily at the, are you referring to like the Red Roof building area?
Right, right.
I'm not, I'm not aware that that's servicing as a site at this time. I, we have, I think possibly Terry could be here. Yeah, Terry, Ms. Terry Cordick, our interim public director, might be able to address that.
Hi, Terry Cordick, interim director of Public Works. Mr. Boudreaux, we discontinued that, I would say at least seven years ago.
Really?
Yes.
Have I been sleeping?
Yes, sir. Afraid so. Coming into and out of, getting the public into and out of that location was impossible, especially with our trucks coming in and out with our crews and stuff. So it was decided that our best thing to do was go ahead, make sand available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, so you could prepare yourself for the season if you want, or per event based on the information you're getting from the news media.
Okay, all right. Okay, I just thought that that might have been a fix. I want to be in agreement with Mr. Terry on something so bad.
But you picked that. Like Sidra was saying, you know, there has been occasions, especially if we know that we have an, you know, imminent landfall for a hurricane or something like that, we would open up more of the central location sites, you know. I think we've had up to five or so before that we've opened up to the public for them to avail themselves of sand and bags.
Thank you. I think that's all the questions for now, Sidra. We thank you for that report, and thank you for the information you've been getting out for the purpose of our public. Thank you. Mr. Robidoux, you stay at the floor.
That's all for us, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. In an abundance of caution, before we move to our next item, I'm going to revisit the chair announcements. The first announcement that I made following the moment of silence as it relates to the call for an election, the verbal reading is significant, and I mispronounce a word that could possibly have some influence on what people may think. So again, out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to reread that item again, and it reads, "Notice is hereby given that the Lafayette City Parish Council plans to consider adopting resolutions ordering and calling elections in the parish to authorize the renewal of ad valorem taxes and to authorize the rededication and extension of an ad valorem tax or taxes at its meeting on Tuesday, July 25, 2017 at 5:30 p.m. in the council auditorium located at 705 West University Avenue here in Lafayette, Louisiana." So the first time, I didn't say rededication, I said reduction. So that could be dangerous in this day and time. So for the record, we got it right now, and thank you for that, that pickup. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to now consider executive session. Jeremy, could you please read item number five?
Aunt Alicia Brown, AL Versus Lafayette Parish Consolidated Government, AL, docket number 20150813J, 15th Judicial District Court, Parish of Lafayette, State of Louisiana.
Okay, and I'm going to ask Ms. Scott to please just give an explanation of the need to go into executive session.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This matter involves pending litigation in which LCG is a party, and because of the nature of the claims and defenses asserted in this litigation, it's my opinion that discussion of the litigation in open session will have a detrimental effect on the litigation or bargaining position of LCG in the litigation. For that reason, it's my opinion that an executive session is permissible and appropriate for discussion of the litigation, and I recommend that the council go into executive session for that purpose.
Well, based on that, I'll entertain a motion in a second to do so. Okay, motion by Not Can, second by Bellard. Thank you very much. Let's call the vote going into executive session, please.
District 1? District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 7?
Yes.
District 8?
Yes.
District 9?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Okay, we will be in executive session and return at our earliest possible point. Tammy, Tammy Pratt. Tammy Pratt. All right, members, I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session. That's being made by Nakane, seconded by Bellard. Please call the roll on...
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
Motion to return is approved.
Okay, if someone would be so kind, I would entertain a motion to accept the recommendations made by Legal. That motion is being made by Nakane. Seconded by Lewis. Call the vote on that motion, please.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District seven? District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you very much. We're gonna now move to comments from the public. We do have blue cards tonight, so let us be reminded that this portion of our meeting is an opportunity to make your voice heard before the council, the administration, and the public. This is the time to speak about topics that are not included as agenda items. As I noted earlier, requests to make comments specific to an agenda item should be made prior to the call of that agenda item by completing a blue request to address the council form for each agenda item you wish to address with the agenda item number noted on the blue form. Please, we request that all matters regarding specific city parish employees be directed to the administration and not be addressed at this public forum. We as a council have a concern for the privacy and protection of government employees. With that being said, however, if your concern is not resolved in either an expeditions or satisfactory fashion, there are other avenues which can be pursued and we ask that you follow up with the council office. Also, confrontational statements and/or threats will not be tolerated. We ask that you conduct yourself in a civil manner and with the same courtesy that you would expect of others. Lastly, the five-minute rule is in effect. Madam Clerk, first speaker, please.
First of eight speakers, Simon Mahan.
If you're with us for the first time, either podium mic is available to you as you come to speak.
This one makes you look thinner in the videos. Good evening, my name's Simon Mahan. I'm a resident here in Lafayette, a LUS customer, a resident of District Two. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I always appreciate our opportunities to come together once a month. I wanted to speak to you all a little bit this evening about good governance and encouraging more civic participation and getting more folks engaged in processes to help make your jobs easier. I know you all spent an awful lot of time poring over the ordinances and the budget. And I think you all are doing a very, very good job. And I really do appreciate the effort and the amount of work that you put in to help make Lafayette a better place. But let us help you. Let the citizens help you do your job and to help us provide you with more information on what it is that we're looking for. And some ways to do that are like with the council agenda meeting postings. Here recently, I've started noticing that the agendas get posted about Thursday, which is great. I appreciate that additional time in order to do that. But whenever you click on an ordinance, for instance, the PDF will come up. It is not text searchable, which means that you have to read sixty-some-odd pages of an ordinance in order to find the one or two things that you may actually be interested in. You know, anytime I am looking for particular information, I'll set up a Google alert. So I have Google alerts for things like Lafayette Utility System so that I can get the latest news on what's going on. The problem with Google alerts, for instance, it does not pick up information with regards to what's on the city council, city parish council meeting agendas. And so you have to check the agendas every Thursday, whenever it gets posted. Look at the agendas, read the full agendas, and then read the full ordinances to try and figure out exactly what's going on. And then on top of it, even after you read the ordinances, it's still not necessarily clear what all is being proposed. So making the ordinances text searchable is one way that y'all can make it easier for us to get more engaged. I'm very much looking forward to the budget process that's coming up. Advertising the budget process, making it more aware for folks so that they can get more engaged. But then also offering more opportunities for public input. Most of the public hearings are at one o'clock, which makes it very difficult for folks that work in order to come out to the budget hearings. And then the public input session is slated for a 5:30 PM meeting in late August. And it looks like that might be the only main opportunity for folks to get engaged. If you let folks, if you provide more public forums for folks to attend and to get more involved, they'll do it. And I do look forward to attending the parish budget meeting coming up later this month. If you can provide the budget and more of that information in a graphical form so people can better understand it. You run through the budget, everything's line items and all sorts of different budgeting codes that unless you spend an awful lot of time looking at it, it really doesn't make an awful lot of sense. But if you were to break it out a little bit easier into different departments, it is broken out a little bit in order to make things organized in a fashion. I know it's a very large document and hard to do that. But if you have certain departments like the Parks Department or Public Works Department that you can kind of pull different sections out. And if there are hot topics that people are particularly interested in, like the drainage issues that we're having, maybe have a little write-up associated with that portion of the budget. In order to do my part as a citizen, I'm going to be hosting what I'm calling the Citizen Budget Project. We will be having three separate citizen-led workshops to talk about the budget, to solicit public input. And then we're going to try and provide you all with a budget-neutral solution for things that we want to do. And one of the examples that I've been talking about is glass recycling. A lot of folks really want glass recycling in the community, but what do you do with the glass? It's hard to get that glass sold off to another company. Well, this evening, we were talking about how much sand we need and how many sandbags we need in order to protect our community. Well, what you can do is if you have a public drop-off for glass containers, you can then turn that glass, you can pulverize it, and turn it into that sand. And all of a sudden, you don't have to spend so much money buying sand that you're gonna give away for free. So that's one of the examples, but we're going to have three different sessions, July 20th, August 9th, August 21st, all at 7 PM at the main library. Thank you.
Thank you, Simon. And all points well taken. I know there was a lot of notes. The only thing I'm gonna, before we move to our next speaker, the issue on the time of the budget, I was a part of that decision and I would really love, one of our biggest objectives is to get people here. But as we continue to address these cost-effective measures and how, you know, a clear message of limiting how much we spend as a government, I could tell you that in my ten years here now, I think the first three or four years, the budget process was after hours and no one was coming. But we were paying overtime to have employees here and staff people here. So the council then, it wasn't this council, but the council then determined that we, who chose to run for elected office, should sacrifice our daily schedules, take time off from our jobs, and come do their service and not have this government pay these overtime costs and extra costs to have meetings in the evening. But I could assure you that if the public has an interest to attend and participate and an afternoon time would be more convenient, that's very easily done to go back to that. But when no one's showing up, and, I mean, zero, and then through all those hearings, a total of three people participate, it just wasn't cost-effective. But thank you for all the input and some of the suggestions you made. You do have, I think, one person have some information. Mr. Bellard?
Yeah, and I'd just like to add, just like you're doing right now, and thanks for coming, you can also talk about the budget, if it's not on here during this time, which is comments from the public. Anything related to the budget can be addressed if you have something, an issue while it's ongoing. And that's just another avenue, just to let the people know. And once again, thank you for coming. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Next speaker, please.
And as well, the public hearing for citizen input on the budget is at 5:30, and they may speak about anything on the budget.
Right, right, and he acknowledged that also, so...
Next speaker is Dr. Michael Walden.
Good evening. First, I want to sincerely thank you for your work and your time and your dedication to our city and to all the city employees and LUS employees who work so hard for us. I know some of them, and I know many are really, truly experts and dedicated. I am Michael Walden. I live in District Three.
Mr. Walden, Dr. Walden, I think doctor. Could you pick your mic up just a little bit?
Yes.
So the recording could pick you up.
I'm a retired environmental engineer and retired faculty member from UL and LSU. Retired from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service as a hydrologist. So I have quite a background in hydrology. And I just wanted to address one misconception that I've heard several times lately. And I want to make sure that you are familiar with this and knowledgeable about this. I've heard several people say that our aquifer, the Chico Aquifer, is protected by an impermeable clay layer. In fact, the LUS mail-out that we get talks... In fact, the LUS mail-out that we get talks about our aquifer being protected, and I suppose they're referring to this theory that there's an impermeable clay layer. Well, the USGS in 2004, in Report Number 73 by Pierre Sargent, concluded that we really need to reexamine that hypothesis. It never was really broadly accepted. It was always a contentious idea that there's this impermeable layer that protects our drinking water. Now, it's very clear that that's not the case, and we need to understand that. It's been understood now clearly for a couple of decades. In their cautious words, they say, "The impermeable barrier assumption has been reconsidered in recent years because of various incidents of subsurface contamination." That means places where they thought there was an impermeable clay layer, like we've been told we have here, are finding contamination underneath it. So it just can't be the case. Since that report, USGS has measured elevated levels of arsenic in the upper Chico aquifer that's almost certainly coming from the surface. We also have seen in the monitoring of the LUS groundwater wells that provide us our drinking water, we've seen contaminants that are coming from the surface. Now, you know, among those is oxymil is one of the things that's been measured. It wasn't even allowed, approved for manufacturing until 1969. So if somebody tells you there's an impermeable layer here, that the drinking water that we're pulling up in our wells are thousands of years old, there's a contaminant in there that was probably put down in the 1970s or more recently. So it's just not true. It may have been true a hundred years ago when the aquifer was under pressure and any leakage through that clay layer was upward. Now, we've pulled so much water out of the aquifer, there's basically a suction on the aquifer, and it's pulling water down from the surface into the aquifer. So my conclusion is that if people advise you that we can just be sanguine about the condition of our groundwater, that we don't have to worry because God has given us this clay layer, well, the clay layer helps to stop the contaminants from going down to the wells, but it doesn't stop the contamination. And the longer we delay in addressing this issue, the more of a problem we're going to have. So we're seeing human-made, man-made contaminants in our well water. We need now to take action. We need to consider having the wellhead protection program that we were suggested to have 20 years ago. We need to consider the rail yard, which is a hotbed of contamination, and it needs to be cleaned up. And the pressure to have that done needs to come from our civic leadership and not just from the citizens. So I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your consideration of this.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Kim Gudow. I too want to thank you all for your dedicated service to our community. I've had the opportunity to address you all before and let you know what Watermark Alliance is all about. It's an organization, just to recap, an organization for civic engagement focused on water and public trust issues in communities. Water, our sacred, our most sacred resource, and public trust, government's responsibility to protect it and conserve it for future generations. Central to its mission is a drive to align community, industry, and government and academia to develop policy and best practices necessary to ensure the health of our sole source aquifer, the Chico aquifer, for generations to come. Across our parish, citizens are very concerned about the threat to our aquifer, our sole source for drinking water, and the public's health posed by a multitude of contaminated sites situated downtown and along the Evangeline Corridor. Hazardous sites that were identified decades ago with little or no corrective action since to reverse the situation. The migration continues. In March, Watermark, in March of this year, Watermark Sierra Club and Mike Walden, the retired engineer that just spoke, submitted to LCG and LUS a 10-point plan of action. It includes as major points, number one, a comprehensive major testing of our water wells that are drawing in groundwater from these sites into our supply, which lies a mere 1,300 feet away. Many of these wells are situated 1,300 feet away. Number two, a contingency plan to shut in certain wells and plan for relocation of the North Water Facility. It calls for appropriate interface among agencies, namely DEQ, DHH, and the EPA, along with LUS and LCG. It calls for a collaborative effort between our government and the agencies, together with community input. We also proposed as part of that plan the drafting of appropriate wellhead protection area procedures, as well as appropriate zoning and land use designations for these sites. It's important to stress that we are all looking for leadership, both in the community as well as the business and industry sector, as well as government, and as well as academia sector, to make sure that our sole source aquifer is protected for future generations. It's the expressed desire that we want to come together, to regroup, rethink, and reposition ourselves for our community, for future generations to be able to enjoy this sacred resource. We don't want lawsuits, we want leadership, and we want science factored into the business decisions that you all make regarding this area. We hope the LCG and LUS Council will provide a platform for further discussion. We had hoped to have been placed on the agenda by now after your receipt of this plan 90 days ago. Having said all that, I think it's important to clear up a few published misconceptions regarding the pending litigation on the matter of the railroad. The suit is against Union Pacific Railroad, not the city. The claim was filed on behalf of a handful of private landowners near the facility, including Salvation Army, not by Sierra Club, not by Kim Gudell, not by Mike Walden, not by Watermark. Once evidence was found that the railroad contaminants were being drawn in to our water wells, the suit was amended to include a citizen suit. This suit is for the city and all users of the aquifer. The cost to assess the extent of damage, as well as the cleanup, should be borne by the responsible party, the railroad, not the taxpayers. We look forward to hearing from you all and forward to rethinking solutions.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Andrew Abear, and he provided two cards, one as a city-registered voter and a second card as a parish-registered voter.
Good evening. I figured I might lose a little weight if I stood at this one. I wanted to share some information that y'all provided to me, and I showed this to a few people, and they said conflicts of interest. And so, well, how do you get a conflict of interest as an elected official? And I realize there's one council district that has no conflict of interest, District Six. All 16,000 city-registered voters live in District Six. He has no people from out of the city in his district. So he has no conflict of interest. But on the other extreme, and that's Bruce Conk's district, and I wanted to thank him for providing the information. District Nine, on the other hand, has 1,200 registered city voters. Basically, 6% of his constituents live in the city, the other 94% live out of the city, which poses a question. If he's going to vote for what a majority of his constituents want, then he wouldn't vote for anything in the city. District One, 16,000 registered city voters, 12% of his constituents live in the city, the other 88% live outside the city. I think there's some conflicts of interest, and personally, it'd be difficult for me to say, well, should I vote for what the city wants because I only represent 12% of my constituents? Or should I vote for the 88%? District Two, 2,300 registered city voters, only 14% represented in the city. The other 86% are outside the city, and they're not on the LPUA Council. District Three, 12,600, 91% in the city. I believe that voter would vote for what is best for the city, no conflict of interest. District Four, 14,000, 94% of his constituents live in the city. He's an LPUA rep, too. I think he'd vote what's best for the city. It would be difficult, conflict of interest. District Five, 4,000 registered city voters, 25% of his constituents live in the city of Lafayette, the other 75% don't live in the city of Lafayette. People have told me that seems like a conflict of interest. District Seven, 11,000, 64% in the city. He's getting pretty balanced. It might be a little difficult to figure out which one he's going to vote for. District Eight, 16,000 registered city voters, 84%. Probably, he will lean towards what is best for the city. And I'm going to provide you with copies of these. That's what I wanted to find out. Can we be Parish One? I think it is time. I asked for a copy of the constitutional provision for the consolidation to take place, whereas the assets of the city are absorbed by the parish. There are no documents to do that. So in essence, consolidation, merger, has not even taken place yet. I think we need to do that. I think now's the time to do that. I think the budget hearing is going to be a great time to do that. I wanted to thank Bruce for pointing out that y'all did vote on the property tax renewals and increases, or the renewal rates separately as city and parish voters. And again, that's why I filled in two blue cards. You still recognize me as two separate voters at the voting booth, but you will not recognize me as two separate persons voters here at your council meetings. I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's equal. You know, they create districts with equal representation from the federal level all the way down to the city of Youngsville, Broussard, Scott, Dusso, and Carancro levels, but they don't do it to the city of Lafayette. I think it's time we look into that. I think it's time for Parish One. Thank you for your dedication. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Cassandra Ford.
Oh, I'm sorry. You sure? Go ahead. We got time. Mr. Bellard?
Yeah, I have one comment I'd like to add, and I can only speak for myself. In almost 10 years of being on this council, I've never seen one council member, ever, ever, not vote which for best for any constituent, because we represent everyone. Because not only is my vote for my district, but I'm voting for the whole parish. So I don't look at it the way that you look at it, as city versus parish, because if that's the case, I'm voting on everything inside and outside of District Five. And one other point is, I live in the city limits of Lafayette. I have the city water, city electricity, LUS fiber. I'm not on the LPUA board.
I know, that's...
But my thing is, I have never, and I don't think anyone else has ever, said what you said, that, oh, which one are you going to vote for? This one or that one? We're one council. We vote for everything, and I think everyone feels the same way. It's not this city versus parish little thing that I have to go through. I do what's best for the whole entire parish. I just wanted to say that because I just don't like some of the comments of saying that we sit up here and separate, oh, well, because this part of my district is this big population, I'm only going to side with them. I've never done that, and I've never seen that in 10 years up here. I just wanted to clarify that because that's how I feel. I can't speak for everyone else, but that's how I feel about it.
I understand that completely, and I realize when I said that, that I would probably get some feedback, and I appreciate that. But I would like equal representation.
And look, that's fine. I'm not here to argue that point. I'm just saying...
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
I haven't seen it the other way. Thank you.
I understand that. Thank you very much.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Cassandra Ford.
Hi. Thank you all again for everything that you do for us. We do appreciate you representing us at both the city and parish level. My name is Cassandra Ford, and I'm a doctoral student over at UL in Biology. I'm a resident in District Four, and I'm also the environmental team leader for Indivisible Akadiana. And I wanted to talk to you a little bit about both the Chico aquifer, which you've heard a little bit about today, and renewable energy. And so first, many Akadiana residents are pretty familiar with our aquifer, the Chico. It's a sole-source aquifer that provides water for much of southwestern Louisiana. And that sole-source designation means that for 50% of the region that this aquifer services, they get 90% of their water from that aquifer. So that means this is the only place that we are getting our water for irrigation, agriculture, and our own public, personal use. And I think that this means that both the public, the government, and the scientific community need to take a pretty close look at what's happening to our water source and make sure that we're not having any issues with contamination. And so currently, the water is being tested every three years, and unfortunately, I don't really think that that's a great solution. I think that we should be trying to test our water a little bit more frequently than every three years and sending out a pamphlet every year saying, oh, these are the contaminants that we see, when it's a test from three years ago. Instead, I think that we should be checking for man-made chemicals, which are not always included in those testings, and we should be doing it on an annual basis. As some of my other colleagues have said before, one of our main areas of concern is this abandoned Union Pacific rail yard. And so contaminants have been found on this area of land, and it sits right on top of our aquifer. And to make matters worse, this area is designated to be a part of this I-49 corridor that is being proposed. And when building this overpass, what they're going to do is put giant pylons into the ground throughout this abandoned rail yard and driving them right into the ground into our aquifer. This is pretty much just going to drive any contaminations that are found on the surface right into our water source. And so before our consolidated government makes such a huge decision about this corridor, we should really take a hard look at what's actually on the surface of this area before we dedicate it to something so important. And so we should also take a look at any other possible routes that this corridor could be taking. There are other proposed plans. There are a lot of options that I think we should take a pretty hard look at before we just go with maybe what could be the easiest plan out there. And as far as I know, there are other cities that have built bypasses like this, the overhead highways that kind of sweep over the city, and it doesn't really help much financially for the small businesses that are located in that area. Instead, you kind of find some of the chain restaurants, and those kinds of areas tend to get a little rundown and don't actually really benefit much revenue for the city. And so respectfully, I think that you should look at some of the other options that are being proposed instead of just looking at this one proposed plan. Second, I wanted to also implore you all to look at some renewable energy options, especially in consideration for this new power plant that's being proposed soon. Renewable energy is the way of the future, and it has dramatically different environmental impacts than coal or natural gas. And most constituents in Louisiana and Lafayette support using renewable energy and think that we should... that we should move forward in that capacity for our power abilities. Finally, I did want to thank you all for your consideration for several things that I feel are moving Lafayette forward, including electric buses, electric car chargers, which I think is one of the topics that will be considered today, and the LED light bulbs in the street lamps is also a really nice way that you are making Lafayette a better and safer place. And I think that if we continue to move in this direction of renewable energy and electric car use, that a lot of people with electric cars and more energy-conscious people will want to come to our city and they will drive through here on their way to New Orleans and stop and help us generate revenue by charging their car at these kinds of charging locations. And so with that, I want to thank you all and please help us all as constituents move forward in the direction for the benefiting sake of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Matthew Isaac.
Hi, my name is Matthew Isaac. I'm a resident of District Nine on Northside Lafayette. I'm a member of Indivisible Acadiana and part of the environment team. Like some of the other speakers, I would like to kind of address the issue and express my concern for safeguarding our water, the safety of our water supply in this city. We've all heard that the Chico aquifer is our sole source of water, but I think fewer people know that just how permeable that aquifer is. It's not solidly capped like we might have thought. The clay layer that holds it together is permeable, contaminants do get down there. And also, another thing that's a little bit different about the aquifer as compared to some others, is that it's very close, it's fairly close to the surface. So again, contaminants can get into that fairly easily. In kind of learning a little more about the aquifer, I did come across the recommendations from the Sierra Club and Watermark Alliance to other environmental organizations in town. That, they made 10 recommendations in March, March 22nd, actually, so it's coming on 90 days just this week. So I just kind of want to remind you guys to look at those recommendations. They kind of center on two main topics that have been addressed by some of the speakers so far. First, testing for contaminants. We would like to see, I think all of us, particularly in the environmental organizations, would like to see more frequent testing than just three years, given how easily contaminants can get into that supply, and knowing that an abandoned rail, rail yard sitting on top of the aquifer is contaminated. The rail yard is actually an area of particular concern for me, not just with respect to the water supply, but the fact that it has asbestos, lead and other contaminants that can be transmitted just through contact. So one recommendation was that that area be declared a public hazard. And what I see as this kind of a resident of the Northside and a frequent visitor to downtown, is that there's a lot of parking on that rail yard during events, like festivals downtown and so forth. Heavy vehicles, families, people on that rail yard during those events. Given the contaminants such as asbestos, lead, everything else can be transmitted just through contact or through stirring it up by driving on it, I really think that needs to stop for people's safety and it really should be considered a public hazard. And I think that's really all I need to say right now. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Dennis Sullivan.
Thank you, council members, for your service to the community and for the opportunity to speak tonight. Just a couple of quick comments. I've registered my public opinion about the, the relative foolhardiness of putting an interstate through the middle of our town, and I focused a lot of my concerns on the threat to the aquifer, to the Chico aquifer. I have a little cause for hope just of late, because the efforts to look at the LRX idea, the Lafayette Regional Expressway, which would go around our city, are, are being, are coming back to the forefront. And I would encourage you, if any of you hear from your citizens about the questions about the aquifer or concerns about a elevated interstate through the middle of our town, that you suggest that they attend some of the meetings about LRX and, and try to get some information, because I think it's a viable alternative that should be considered. And that's what I have to say today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Final speaker, Lillian Espinoza-Gale.
Thank you for all you do, Lillian Espinoza-Gale. You know, I wasn't really planning to make comments at this part of the meeting, but we are under this storm watch, and I have not done too well with hurricanes. I lost my first house to Hurricane Juan in 1985. The next one, I moved to a place that never flooded before in Homa. Hurricane Andrew got that. And also my condo in Ocean Springs, Mississippi. And then Katrina in Homa, and then Gustaf in Tibode. So, you know, I used to be a member of the Homa Terbon Chamber of Commerce. I served on the coastal committee until 2010. You know, I came over here in 1988 to produce the news for Channel Three, right when we were starting the recycling program. And one of the reasons that worked is because every night or every day, people like Mrs. Colley Salim would call with a different problem. It was, you know, that's the only reason we did stories on it. Lafayette's always been a wildcat or community. We got natural gas in 1896, that's why we got the college. We did the recycling. We got the fiber optic.